It's seven o'clock, July 26, 2021. This is a planning commission meeting. I'd like to call me to order. And it's our pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I'll do a special invocation that we pray that we can make fair and just decisions for the best interests of our community. Amen.
Amen.
Okay. Okay. Let's start in real time. Okay. Paul Almaranti?
Here.
Leslie McKenna?
Here.
Diagono Waker?
Here.
Jennifer Swack?
Here.
Laurie Zollak?
Present.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that while everyone has a chance to review the agenda for tonight, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda. One second. Okay. Everyone had a chance to review the minutes from the two meeting. Do we have any changes and/or corrections?
There is the change to remove with assistance from Act 51. Oh, sorry, you're on agenda. I'm on minutes.
No, that's right.
Are we on minutes?
I'm on minutes.
Okay, yes, we do have a change.
Yes.
With assistance from Act 51 needs to be stripped.
Right, because the sidewalks were repaired on a budget.
Right.
Okay. I move, or can I get a motion to accept the minutes as amended?
I would make a motion to approve the agenda.
As amended, okay. On minutes.
We didn't do the agenda though, right? Did you give up?
I did the agenda.
We did the agenda.
They don't need a roll call. We don't need an.
Do I defer an amendment? Okay, let's do a roll call. We want to get a second and first and then a roll call.
Also, I can do it.
Okay. Roll call. Paul Almaranti?
Here.
Yes.
Leslie McKenna?
Yes.
Diagono Waker?
Yes.
Jennifer Swack?
Yes.
And Laurie Zollak?
Yes.
All in favor.
Thank you. Okay. At this time, I'd like to have a motion to close the planning commission meeting so we can move on to the public hearing portion of the meeting.
I would make a motion to close the planning commission meeting and open it for public hearing.
All support.
Okay. Is that done? Thank you. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, I would like to have a motion, or I would make a motion to open the public hearing. So can I get a second?
Got a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, the public hearing, we do have one audience member. And do we, can you state your name?
David Blacky.
David Blacky, okay. 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 So the public hearing is to hear public comments on an ordinance to amend the Village of Leonard zoning ordinance number 19 to regulate where and under what conditions medical marijuana can be grown. So, do you have, our audience member, do you have any public comments to make on that topic? Okay. So, none being noted, we actually, I guess we could read just the purpose of them.
Or just the rip?
All of them?
No. No, it's been publicly, it's been publicized in the paper, in the Oxford Journal, right?
And the, not the whole ordinance. What gets published is that it's a public meeting.
Okay.
Public ordinance. You have to go up to the village clerk to see the.
The actual ordinance changes.
Right. So. So, the shortened version of all of the amendments to it is we are considering amendment to ordinance 19 zoning ordinance to regulate where and under, under what conditions medical marijuana can be grown. Go to page eight. And the summary of the requirements are that in our village, we only have, we would like to limit marijuana to be grown in the industrial, light industrial areas and limit the number of plants to 72.
I think it was law, Michigan law.
The, no, default Michigan law. Right. So, I guess to that, as this is written, we could make a a motion to, let's see, how do I write it? How do I do this out? Send our recommendation to the village council to amend the Village of Leonard zoning ordinance number 19 to regulate where and under what conditions? Well, we're, and after we discuss it, we have to do that. So, so essentially, it looks to me, and I got through reading this over, I sat down and read it like maybe three times this afternoon, that, right, that we're following Michigan law, but what we're really doing is just making sure there's additional regulations added to the ordinance section to provide just restrictions within the district so it doesn't compromise health, safety, and general welfare of people in the district is kind of the takeaway on that. That's a good summary. So, after, since this part of the meeting was just for public comment and there is no public comment, we can move on to where we will discuss it later on in the meeting. So right now, I would make a motion to close the public hearing. One second. Okay. So now, I would like, I would like to have someone make a motion to open the planning commission meeting again.
I would make a motion to open the planning board, also call as a public.
Okay. Okay. Now, following the agenda, we move now to audience business. Is there anyone who has any audience business?
Yes.
Okay, let her go.
I'll replace the fence on the side. I'll go in.
So this is the.
Thank you.
Paul maybe.
It was too elevated for coverage. That's all right.
I can share. Can you guys go? Thank you.
Basically, it's going to be in the exact same spot. It's just going to be replacing what's there with a new vinyl panel fence, six feet high.
Okay. I know there's ordinance as to how close he can go to the road. So I think that's.
If it's a sidewalk away, there's, I mean, there's.
And that's about where it is, right? Where currently is, it's.
I should take that back and take the existing fence is maybe a three-foot fence slightly back. And then his original fence starts at six feet. So it is, it is stepped back a little bit, but I think.
Right, it did meet somewhere where there was a distance on that. Is that?
For, very, yeah, very true.
From big.
Yeah, because it is a lot.
It is a driveway, yeah.
So, where your current fence is, how, where it gives big?
Pardon me?
Okay, where the fence is low, you know how you have a piece that's lower?
In the front?
Yes.
But the sidewalk, yeah.
It has to stay low there.
Okay, well, I won't touch that part. I'll just start where it's.
Tall.
Six feet now.
Okay.
And replace.
That would, that would meet the ordinance requirements.
Or because they could match, you could just take a short, a half piece and put it in the first section. So that way, it's kind of a cohesive.
Uniform.
Uniform cohesive look across the board.
Right now, if the piece that's short matches the front of the residential.
Okay.
So that's the same fence as this picket fence.
Oh, and it turns the corner.
It turns the corners.
Ah, so that really is the neighbor's fence.
That part is probably the neighbor's fence. Probably would be a compromise in just leaving that there if that was there. That would satisfy.
Okay, that makes sense. The shorter section is not your fence. It's your neighbor's fence.
I have a.
It matches.
I think it's on my fence, but I can lose that part. It doesn't matter.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. Question on the fence. Does that fence have gaps in between the planks?
No.
So it's?
Looks like a solid fence to me. It's out of season right now, so I couldn't see it. I'm just going by the picture they provided me.
Okay, that's.
But it doesn't look like it has any gaps. It looks like a solid fence.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the purpose is to block out between the two properties. So that, if it meets the no gap, then that would be acceptable. So.
Because you have a buffer strip of less than 10 feet, correct, between your building and that, then you're covered because there, in section 4.38, section B of our ordinance, it says basically, you know, if you have a buffer strip of no less than 10 feet, would be permitted that you could go ahead and use the, the vinyl fence essentially.
In place of the wall?
Yes.
Okay.
And that would be your buffer strip between your business and the residential zone. So that's completely acceptable. And it's also kind of goes along with what we have going throughout the whole community. We don't have any brick walls anywhere between any industrial residential separations at this point.
And we wouldn't want to lose the trees.
We won't change that, yeah. Yeah, we don't want to lose the trees. Because I'm sure that a brick wall would compromise your trees, wouldn't it? Quite that.
But if they did a footing, it would probably compromise the roots.
Yeah, for sure.
No, I don't know if we're required to. We might as well take a vote.
I think, yeah, sorry, we should. Okay, so we'll do a roll call vote.
Yes, so the, the statement would be to allow Dave Blacky to replace his fence with the submitted white PVC six-foot fence with solid panels. Okay, so I'll go ahead and take a roll call vote if everyone agrees on that. Paul Almaranti?
Yes.
Leslie McKenna?
Yes.
Diagono Waker?
Yes.
Jennifer Swack?
Yes.
And myself, Laurie Zollak?
Yes.
Okay, it's an all in favor vote. Thank you. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Both of us who are seeing that, I think we'll add a little something. It looks really nice. It does, it does. Take your. Okay. You can have my copy. You can have my copy. Okay. All right, moving on. Planning commission business. We have graciously, we graciously welcome Paul Almaranti back to the planning commission. So we have a full complement now of five members. And I guess that moves us now to discussing the marijuana ordinance amendment. Now, I guess we could go one at a time and see if anyone has any other comments regarding, any comments and or questions about the amendment.
So it looks to me like from reading through it, I mean, I don't know if I can go through item by item, but it does look, essentially, we're just looking for, what's allowed would be cultivation only. No dispensaries, no.
Right.
Anything else other than cultivation.
It's spelled out, there's no dispensary.
Right, and then just following, as far as cultivation goes, we are just following Michigan law and the Medical Marijuana Act.
MCL.
It says it's only an industrial or special, like someone would have to come in for a special use if they wanted to do it outside of industrial. So they'd actually have to ask to do something on their own property.
Then from a loan board.
Yes, yes. Public people, yeah. Part of the concern was in other cities, these places are popping up, not necessarily known. And I won't cite the city, but apparently, a guard dog had gotten out and attacked residents. This was a dog guarding this cultivation area. And they were close enough to residential. This was not long ago. This was recent, and this was close. So that was the concern from that side is that the, there's also, there may be an odor that follows these. That may be something that, you know, it's something that you can control when you're the neighbor. You didn't move here to smell this, so. And that odor can be very heavy. So, it can be very heavy on a small amount of plants. So it can be very.
I think it's more the bigger complaints that I hear is, yes.
Well, there are also, I have heard in two, in two villages, about 40 miles north of here, people are buying farmhouses, not even really living, they're just turning a farmhouse into a grow facility and not even having residents living in it. It's just they're using every spot in the building to grow inside.
Yes. So, and they're buying these properties for cash. And you have no, like, and they'll outbid you all day long. So it could be your dream house. And it doesn't matter because they have $100,000 and what you do, and they'll spend it. So it's, it's gotten to that level, you know? It's getting a little bit ridiculous. And that effect's going to happen in the winter. But the ordinance is ahead of that.
We have such a small area that any grow facility that were putting out a smell or odor, it would permeate the whole tiny village.
It would cover.
Everyone, the smell.
Yeah.
So, does anyone have any questions, comments, or concerns? I'm just trying to find the note on where it said that industrial. Am I, am I missing it? Because I've gone over this a bunch of times. And we can find that, I'm trying to find it. Article 26, okay. Oh, is this ordinance? How do you find that? That could be in the whole book. If we had our computers, we would just search for the word.
Right, right. Okay.
Yeah, I got one.
Just set up. Oh, this wouldn't be in the, that would be. Oh, yeah, in the email. Could you search the?
Just look at section five.
Section five?
Section five would find it. It's defined.
The, the name of section five is Amendment to Article 15, Limited Industrial District.
Page.
Page 8. We were all looking at Brent to see if it wasn't.
Aye.
Have it down the page? Where's it?
They searched the title of it. It's the title of the section, so it's not in.
Oh, right there, yeah. Right here. Oh. Oh, my goodness.
Okay, we probably searched in the red.
It was.
It was. Exactly what I was doing. Okay, thank you.
So it's all in order now. So, yeah, it looks like the rest of this is all Michigan law.
Okay. Right. The Michigan Medical Marijuana Act, MCL 333.26421 is the law for the record. Okay. It was my only thing because I just didn't see it in details. It's necessary. Okay. Any other comments or questions?
Across the House, this come off of the new bill, all the different descriptions. Last week, they updated the descriptions for all this, that happened, that two. There's just a lot of descriptions of things that pop up, you know, no language.
Oh, there's two, two of them?
Yeah, there's two separate codes.
Now, does it, will this change any of the language in what we chat?
No, it's something that we probably just want to hand out. It's always the, the question regarding definition of, I have that come off. It isn't in here.
Yes. And when did they enact this? July 13?
Yeah. It was effective in November.
Actually, it looks like effective October 11 coming up.
So our thing goes forward prior to this in effect, this would be before that.
This is a.
We could update to include this.
Is this going to ratify?
Right. Yeah, it's been signed, it's signed.
Okay.
I see that. It's definitions.
Okay.
So it's, it's regarding the exact language that the law is using.
Okay.
So I think, I guess it would be a good idea to have this on hand in case.
So we could. We could send this forward to the council and say, be aware of the July 15 new definitions for the language.
In my hometown, they like it. So they turn it based on this.
Right.
And compare.
Before it officially gets installed, yeah.
So we would.
Because I said this just happened.
You send in the bill number, you can find it.
Right. So that would be with the following recommendations. If we do pass, sending forward would be one of the two bill numbers. So I can write it in here. 4740 and 4741. And 4740.
This will be something I can continue as I chase.
Right. Then, then we have to the council to take our recommendation to do this. Right.
I'll show the council, okay.
So, okay. So any other comments, questions, or concerns?
Do you have the motion to?
Ah, yeah, I actually, I was looking at. Oh, thank you. Okay, so if you want to go to right here. Okay. I guess now we need to make a motion to send our recommendation to the Village of Leonard council to amend the Village of Leonard zoning ordinance number 19 to regulate where and under what conditions medical marijuana can be grown as written or with the following recommendations to include the new language from the recently passed bill number 4740 and 4741.
I always make a motion as soon as.
Okay.
I'm not going to try to do that.
I'll second that. So you enjoy this.
Right.
She made the recommendation. And you seconded it. Okay, we need to have a roll call vote on that. Okay. Paul Almaranti?
Yes.
Leslie McKenna?
Yes.
Diagono Waker?
Yes.
Jennifer Swack?
Yes.
Laurie Zollak?
Yes.
Okay. So. Okay. Moving along to the next agenda item. Let's talk about our sidewalks. Who wants to talk about sidewalks? All right, for Paul's benefit, we've been kind of knocking around the idea of getting more sidewalks in the village, deleting disconnected segments that just end nowhere and start up again, and repairing with the goal of what Oakland County calls complete streets. And they want to have more connectivity in communities where everyone can get to the town square, get around their village on the sidewalk safely. So that's an Oakland County initiative that we are using as a guideline to make our community a little more connected. So what we did was in June, the, the planning commission took, took a ride around town and looked at all, looked at all the sidewalks. So it was kind of a preliminare, let's look around and see what we can find and, you know, what we think could be improved, added, completed. So that's what these color sheets are. So.
Nicely done, too.
Yeah, Jennifer did a good job. So I'm trying to put them in order here. Think of it as in quadrants, right?
Mm-hmm.
We should not put the quadrants was one of my proposals. I have a, I have a working out on it. And I think I handed everybody, which I can't remind.
Is that this?
Maybe we should just go by.
Yeah, that's it. It was a little more like a southeast. This is, the, the working out on it. You got one? I have one, see that? Oh. Is there two in that time? Is there any? It's not ready to be called. And this.
Wait, you know, hold on, I have to flip.
Make sure that's taped?
No, it's not taped.
No, it's not. I have a search paper this time. No, I have a lot of them out here.
So I think we just start with like a northeast, southeast, and we've got a little.
Right, I need to help them to make, to run it.
Oh.
It's not that. It's not that. It's not that. Don't do that. It's not that. It's one of these. Let me skip it or something. You know you have it because everyone's got it but me. And you.
Make sure we're getting it like. Just look at this guy already.
It's, did I, is it turned over right here? Is this this?
Uh, no.
No. Does, two pages? Oh, you've got that. It's here.
Yeah.
I knew I could vary the paper. Here. And this is probably yours. And do you have one? Okay. There they are. I did theirs, I am not on. Okay. All right, now this is just like, kind of like thoughts coming out. So it's not, it's, we've talked about a lot of these, but we have to kind of get it organized. So.
Are Oakland County looking to put sidewalks everywhere in the bill?
No, they, they wouldn't pay for it. They're just, they, they have their goals for Oakland County, and that's part of what complete streets is. It's in our, you know, I'll read it. It's in here, in our planning book. Everybody got a clue as to where it was? It was in the back. Complete Streets, page 59. Complete Streets is an approach to transportation planning and design. Public Act 135 of 2010 defines complete streets as roadways planned, designed, and constructed to provide appropriate access to all legal users in a manner that promotes safe and efficient movement of people and goods, whether by car, truck, transit, assistive device, foot, or bicycle. The purpose of the new act is to provide additional tools for communities to plan road projects and offers educational resources to make their communities more walkable. The law requires the Michigan Department of Transportation. The law requires the Michigan Department of Transportation or the Road Commission to take the designs of a local community into consideration during the planning and design of a project within municipality. The new legislation does not mandate any local road agency to adopt a complete streets policy or spend any additional dollars for non-motorized facilities. Let it go on to summarize the law. I could read it if you want me to, it's, one more paragraph.
All right.
Under Act 51, and we do get a lot of our funding for sidewalks under Act 51, requires county, cities, villages, and MDOT to consult with one another when planning a non-motorized project affecting a transportation facility that belongs to another road agency. It identifies non-motorized facilities contributing to complete streets as eligible for funding. Requires the State Transportation Commission within two years to adopt a complete streets policy for MDOT and to make model complete streets policies available to municipalities and counties. Uh, it requires state and local road agencies to consult with each other and agree on how to address complete streets for projects that affect a roadway under, uh, another road agency's jurisdiction. It allows MDOT to provide technical assistance in coordination to local agencies in development and implementing of their policy. Requires MDOT to share expertise in non-motorized and multi-motor planning and development of projects within municipal boundaries. It allows agencies to enter into agreement with one another to provide maintenance for facilities constructed to implement a complete streets policy. Changes to the Michigan Planning and Abling Act under PA, Public Act 134. Modifies the definition of streets to include all legal users, including bicyclists and pedestrians. Expands the definition of streets to include all legal users. I already read that. Did we have a mistake in here? Okay, expands the, um, elements that may be included in the master plan to encompass all transportation systems that move people and goods. Specifies that transportation improvements identified in the plan are appropriate to the context, the community, and considers all legal users of the public right of way. Ensures that transportation elements of the master plan will be implemented in cooperation with applicable county road commission or MDOT. So.
Thank you.
It's a guideline. Um, we use it as a guideline, but we haven't ratified it in terms of, we are committed to it, and our reluctance is, they want all the sidewalks to be five feet. And we can't make our sidewalks five feet.
Not in every location.
Right, not in every location.
So our five feet, maybe just a little overgrown, so.
Right. So, uh, I mean, you participate in the plan and, and get the help from Oakland County, you, I mean, maybe we could.
Well, that's, like, leaves that long-term goal, anywhere that you could put five foot sidewalk in. Okay, great.
Right.
But you're not just going to start ripping up everything and.
Right, so how do you transit, how do you transition?
Right, but it's, I mean, slowly you transition, so. Act 51, is that an annual gift or available monies that we could address?
It is, uh, we, some, I'm not sure that we've ever returned it, but it mostly only, from my understanding, can be used for handicapped stuff, ADA.
That would be my question, is to attack anything Act 51 first.
Right.
It's a, yeah, like, just put it on the line, do something, at least a little bit at a time, one or two corners, whatever's allowable.
And maybe understand better what Act 51 can do for.
That's what I'm wondering, if we could, if we could unpack that a little bit, because perhaps if there are some areas that have created an inaccessibility issue with a handicap person who lives in a particular area, is that something that could move something up a priority list as far as, you know, if they would give us assistance? If our issue is right now, we don't have the budget to accomplish it.
Right.
It's something that would allow us to accomplish it with a blind resident or something like that, by using those funds, rent, do what we need to do.
Yeah.
Okay.
Getting the person to church over here.
Right.
Just connect to, you know.
Right.
Could that be used instead of just ramps? Could that disconnection also be considered if somebody was handicapped?
So this could take a longer look at Act 51.
Okay. So that is, okay, I, I know, I can get with Mike and find out what he knows, and, um, Shar might know some things being part of Main Street.
Or being able to ask somebody.
Right. Okay, so I'm going to type down, I'm going to go down Main Street. So, following my, um, outline here, the purpose, and we can expand and make this more eloquent, but I, I went real simple and just off the cuff. The purpose of expanding connectivity in our community and connection of disconnected sections of sidewalk. So, does anyone have a comment on how we could, uh, add flair to that? Or keep it simple for now and keep working on the meat of it? Okay. Um, the major considerations are safety, cost, and connectivity. Now, um, is that cover everything, or is there more that can be added to? You know, in terms of.
I think part of what we, that makes it more feel and love and power and biking, was that we didn't want to destroy ancient trees and, you know, the beautiful tree shit of the town. We don't want to make it less than that feel either, so that would be some of the one considerations.
So that would be more like maintain.
Integrity, I guess, along the book.
Yeah, right. That goes with this.
Yeah. Just follow along the book, right?
Right. Okay. All right, that's good. Then scope. I don't know, you know, how we pick the order. If we're going to make a ten-year plan, eight-year plan, twenty-year plan, you gotta kind of get, you know, some kind of coordination going, like, pick what are most important sections were, where we thought the most potential for the most number of people would benefit, you know. And I'll, I'll get to that later, but right now, the, the main roads first, the subdivided roads second, unless there's something glaring that we want to attack, which I did have one, but I wanted to mention, but I'll mention it later. So you could do like, okay, if you had an eight-year plan, if you went by quadrant, you could go one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Or you could do it by, we still need to just assign this as quadrants so we can speak to where they are, you know. Um, maybe I should find out what the real number is of the square? Like, I don't know if there's like a actual legal description.
It's like, I have to look it up and see, it's been so long.
Well, would it be like?
A test question, yes.
Like, is it like?
It's part of our old five, four, zero, you know, it's part of our.
Right, so if it's like, we're in the.
I think section is four, one.
Six, six by six blocks, they break it up, and there's numbers to these. So can I make that near sign there?
Yes, I'll type.
I mean, I suppose that Judy would know that, right?
I, I could ask her, she may know.
It would be on like our legal descriptions of the pages where she has the list.
When I took the Realtor exam, it was two thousand, it was nine, no, it was two thousand and three, and this was like part of the Realtor exam.
Are you talking about like libers and things like that?
You don't, you don't even touch them for years after that.
Well, when you have, when you have a township, each square of the thirty-six is numbered.
Yeah.
So this, we, parts of our village might be in one number, part might be in the other, but the number would go to the coordinates.
And the only reason, if that, the only way that wouldn't work is if it falls like.
Catagories.
And it just makes it hard on our quadrant. We might, we might even be.
Just caters A, B, C, D.
Going northwest, corner, southwest, and we don't just, you know, that's those.
So the top left one would be northwest. And the right one would be northeast. And southwest. And southeast. Ever forward to be referred to as.
Right.
If we're talking about a certain section that we want to repair, or fix, or create. Okay, so I think this will grow into what year plan it will be going forward as we keep doing the work, but I'm just saying it's an eight to ten-year plan. We talked about twenty-five years, maybe, you know, who knows? Realistic, we gotta see what kind of funding would be available and what kind of costs would be involved. So we could get a bond, you know, I don't know if you, uh, you'd get a bond for a big project. You'd get a bond so that we could do our project over the eight years, but we would have to propose, you know, what we need, and maybe work with the, uh, council to figure that out, or we ask for something, and then they tell us yes or no. And then we'd have to get on the ballot. I know there is money, uh, the Leonard budget, if, we, we want to get a line item, we want to get on the budget as a line item, so that we're not just talking about commission for sidewalks, but actually getting a budget for it.
That was also transparent to everyone? With the money he's doing in part, he's holding.
Right.
Yep.
So that would be one of my, my goals, to make it more real, is to get a line item in the budget.
That's great.
So that would be one of the main recommendations to the council. Um, we talked about the Act 51 money, uh, maybe with the complete streets and some cooperation with Oakland County, maybe they would go further than just using it for ramps and.
Right.
Which we had enough class to do the ramps, and that was.
Right.
I like the idea of going after the ADA. You know, with what we have already available, you know, that we can attach ADA compliance to what we have, and then kind of bond.
Right.
And why I guess you're the impression that our trustee Shar, it has some expertise in this area?
She belongs to complete streets, and I've been with her to a couple of meetings. Um, she would have contacts.
Okay.
Um, that can help us. I do know that the Shelby Township, um, had their planning commission in her, her side, she was the sidewalk person, and you know her, right, configure right.
Sure.
So, um, but they have a huge budget. She pretty much would say, we want a sidewalk care, and they said, okay. So they have a really large budget. So that's not the same concern that.
It's more about sidewalks to be fair, so.
Right. So, um, there's something called Special Assessment Districts, where we could try and, uh, get money that way, and I think that again would just be through the village council. I don't know if you actually have to go on the ballot for that, or just as how we can sign the money into sidewalk fund. So I have to learn more about what that is and how it works. I'll check more on that. In twenty eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, um, it did, sidewalks did get on the budget for repairs only, and what they did was went around and where there was more than a one-inch gap, they tried to grind, uh, down or actually build up to make no tripping hazards. So, um, they did a lot of repairs where there were some tree roots that were upending, uh, the sidewalk, they actually chopped it out and ground it down and replaced it with, um, limestone. So we saw that, I don't particularly like that solution. So, uh, it, to, to me, the slag they used is too coarse. It needed to be more like the Palmyra Trail. So if we were to go in, it's, it's like when you have a glass and you put big rocks in, and then you can add, um, smaller pebbles, it still fills the glass. Then you can add sand, and you still can add water, so it's like, you can fill the gaps in, in that hard limestone with a slag instead of just the, the hard limestone.
And where do they do that at?
Um, in front of the yellow house on uphill.
Oh.
They, they chopped out the sidewalk there that used to be just, it was here because of the roots.
It was washed away.
There was, yeah.
Okay.
So I would say, you know, recommendation of anywhere where they put in the limestone and a, a smaller stone slag.
Mm-hmm.
Just to make it a little more smooth, if we can't add sidewalk. The cost for repairs in twenty twenty was nine dollars a foot. Now, some of that repaired work was done by the village, some of it was done, you know, by RDPW. Now, I gotta see what the scope is of what they will and will not do. You know, like, will they put in two ten-foot pieces? Will they put in twenty feet, or after a certain, a lot will go, no, we're going to hire that out. You know, it's like, there's a limit to what, or you can, how you can do. What we didn't notice, and I guess, I don't know how thick sidewalks are. Are they four inches, are they six inches?
Four inches.
Is that standard?
Pretty much.
So.
I guess that five feet wide.
Well, I would propose to match anything we've got, if it.
Yes, I would not put a five-foot section where there's a three-foot section of.
Right. Did we see, do we really have three-foot sections?
We still. I do know we have been candidate, also, that was one section that was highly overgrown that needed to really be.
Oh, yeah, I think that.
Yeah, that's right.
It's a little earlier here.
Yeah, maybe we get a chance, I'll take a shovel, find a legitimate where it's at.
Right.
Well, by the way.
Well, down the line, um, we know where there are some that are not five feet. Are there some that are three?
No, I, I respect.
I'm just wondering if it, I mean, if it really was, like, if anything, quite yet by the yellow house, again, where no one uses it, is that, and that's not salt there? I mean, that's like a whole normal piece up there.
Yeah, that one was skinny, wasn't it? It was going down to.
Thinking of, I need three foot, it's going to be.
It's going to be the most, or it might be the skinniest one.
I, I'll let you do that, it's like, I do use wheels. I use wheels. And then it comes down the driveway.
I hope you're going to something like that.
I don't want to slide down.
Probably put a comment to the side, probably get this extended bike handle or something, you know.
Yes. So. Okay. Crosswalks, I think we need to do a little more research on, uh, if we actually need to indicate that there's a crosswalk there, just by the default of the sidewalk ends and then it starts on the other side, or actually put in painted crosswalks. So that needs to be flushed out some more. Aprons, um, is that only like at the ADA corners that aprons come into effect? Do they have to get wide, do they have to be five foot for the ADA? So like, we have to take our three foots or four foots and make them go out to five foot to match the ADA harder?
ADA is fifty-one inches.
For apron?
No, it's, uh.
Oh, for.
Or wheelchair.
Only the dotted, the, only the dotted portion?
Well, it's, some of the newer wheelchairs, especially electric ones, are wire. It used to be, a lot of them were pushed, they're only about three feet wide, now they're getting bigger. So I think you have a lot for more room, I can go check on that.
Okay. Then I think, uh, we have to decide if some of ours is asphalt. Most of the villages suffer, one part is all cement, so.
Cement is a longer term fix.
Right.
I would like to see things stay consistent.
Right, consistency. So we got all cement, all cement, I think cement's better.
I think just the patchwork look just doesn't really fit with what we're trying to achieve.
Cement, you know, so I think.
Same way. If you're going to do it, do it, I'd rather do a little less section over more time.
Right, okay.
Right, exactly.
Okay. So match what we have, and if it's four feet, keep it four feet. If we have one new section, try to make it five feet?
Are we allowed to keep it four feet if we're like?
We are.
Okay.
There's no law that says we must.
I guess it all depends on where.
It depends on where.
It just depends on where.
I think if you're taking a whole new sidewalk, like, if we went, starting, um, where the plumber lives, I don't know the name of the street. What's the name?
Oh, he's over there.
Oh, look at the map.
Yeah. Well, it's technically, he's, uh, in the area of the 167 here on the Northwest Quadrant. He's talking about that, just on Soviet High. He's actually next to 167 to the east.
So going up that hill, that might be five feet?
Right, and there'd be nothing in the way of that, so it's not, it could be five feet. But in front of the yellow house, clearly you have a few markers pretty.
Right.
That might stop us from the place.
Right.
So just build one section.
Okay. So are, it would be, were, were it in large sections, try to be five feet?
ADA compliance is middle, 36 inches up to 60.
36 to 60?
Yep.
Okay.
And the 60 is more to allow pass, uh, two, fairly in both directions.
Right. The 60 is five feet. Okay, the history, um, I didn't write down the stairs that used to be by, uh, the store. I could add that in there, stairs used to be there somehow. $10,000 for the last two years in repairs. The last new sidewalk was 2019 by the fire station and the new sidewalks by Rowan Hall and Leonard Road was paved. You have 2009 here. Oh, 2009, so that would be 2000, like, 18 or something. How long ago was it that we did the cement out here? In front of Rowan Hall?
Oh, when everything was torn up?
Yeah.
Is it just 18?
Yes.
Is that what, 18?
Was it 18, 19, 10?
That was 19.
18?
Come back and when we redid the, uh, first.
And it definitely was 20.
So that's what, three, three years, four years?
16, 17, 18, something like that.
17 or 18? Oh, 17 and 18. Okay, so actually the last new sidewalk, um, long stretch would be by the fire station. It was 2009. So I should re, reword that, 'cause the new sidewalks by Rowan Hall are in the old. They were, they were late, so. We've already talked about the village can do some simple fixes, but we need to find out what the extent of their limit is. In terms of maintenance, residents now maintain the frontage of their property for snow removal and weeds. So, flush that out. In the, uh, the ordinance book, it talks about people are supposed to maintain their property, but if they're elderly, you know, they may not. Or if they get a long stretch of vacant land, it doesn't get maintained very well. You know, is it, is it our, can we send out a letter reminding, like, can you get your sidewalks cleared off or...
I mean, if they're all, then we just get together and do it.
Yeah.
If it's a long stretch, I don't even wanna suggest round up, but if they prefer, get it, you know?
Right. Okay, so, talked about crosswalks already. Need to find out what the laws are for Rochester Road, which are gonna be different from Homewood. 'Cause Rochester Road is a Plan A road and Homewood is not. So there may be more, uh, like, rules. Yeah, there could be a restriction of, we do have to do the five feet. Now, that has to be researched a little more. Now, in terms of destinations, connectivity goes with, you know, you wanna go somewhere, right? You wanna go to your friend's house, you wanna go to the store, the school, post office, nature park, church, Pollyant Trail, the Leonard Mill, the barber shop, and the service station. How often do you get your hair cut? Not monthly. It'd be more like quarterly, right?
Oh, no. The guys in my house, well, they're, they're...
Seriously?
Yeah, that's a lot for sure. They're big on haircuts.
So, I don't know, how do you, how do you weight, you know, is it important to weight the value of each of those places?
Some of these will be connected too. If you're getting to the, you know, getting into the, let's see, Pollyant Trail and the school, you know, some of these are closer than. It's not like you're getting to weight to the church that, that value trust I gave.
Right. So in terms of our, uh, our maps, can you make the most completed street section would be from here to the school?
The northeast quadrant.
Right. Northeast quadrant, yes. The bottom section. So if we called that complete, are there any areas along there that we thought needed, uh, repair? Or modification or improvement?
That was probably because the street, right?
Well, didn't do it, you did the asphalt.
Oh.
And that was bleak that. And then you have marked, um, the south side of the division, one around that block. There's another sidewalk there.
That was, it's not a good spot.
West side. You got the east sidewalk. But, uh, you know, one way to walk up.
Sharon's house?
Sharon's. The sidewalk's on the all side against the school, but it's not on the west side.
The rest, the... Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Personally, I don't see the inside section as a priority at the time, because it's not a major street or road where there's access in both directions that have sidewalks to take the kids to school.
Right, right.
In fact, there's extra sidewalks on both sides of, um, Homewood, so it would be nice to clean up that and get rid of the asphalt. Pretty much all that's fine, we've worked on.
Right. So the only, uh, the only problem we have there mostly is the asphalt on the one side. The other side has some grass issues and edging. There was a few bumpy spots. One piece was hewing. One piece in that area was like, whoa! I don't know if it was because of tree doors or, yeah, some tree upholstery. So, uh, if we don't tear it out, do they, someone help underneath the asphalt, there's, um, cement, we'd have to ask Sharon, if there's cement under an asphalt and/or, do they put that in themselves? But we don't have to...
So what they prep for cement is, is different than what they prep for asphalt. You know, it means that we've got different layers crushed rock and all the things that are under there for you. When you put your forms up and you put those in, so odds are you're looking at tearing out the asphalt or a complete substrate that you need to put in there wherever it is and, you know, and then pour the cement.
Okay, so, going north on that section of the same northeast section, I really have a problem with where, um, it goes up along the barber shop on the side, keeps going by those fences. And then all of a sudden, that person's driveway is, it's like a crazy bump there.
Yeah.
I think that should be a priority in terms of anyone who's on the north side, we don't have...
This is, and this, if you're looking at the Northwest Quadrant, same street, it's just where it's marked, it's a thicker line, that's what you're talking about right there. That's where the sidewalk is next to the barber shop.
Right.
Should've gone in.
Right, yeah, if we could transfer that to the other side, it'd be better. I get what you're saying, unless we just make this one piece. You know, and when we submit it, just submit it.
It would actually work, if it were one thing.
It would just try to do it.
You know, just, just as one half with...
Hard to copy.
Yeah, because actually that's what, that's what you did too, it's just that it ended up in a state, is all.
It'd be hard to, 'cause we can actually, see how it's, it doesn't match sides always?
I can transfer those if it makes sense.
I would say, yeah, just take that blue line.
Just transfer all the connection ones to...
To the right side if they were, because, see, see what I'm saying?
I totally see what you're saying. I get it, this is, this is this, and I, I see it.
My partner did that.
Well, no, or my notes were on the page, not just...
Right, okay. Gotcha, yeah. So, um, I would like to make, you know, that one of my priorities. Is that in front of a corner house?
Most of them are.
So it would just be a buildup to get, to bring the sidewalk to the driveway height. It's gonna make it rampy, but you can't have that bump there.
So now, and that would be, you've got an X-51 thing, because right now, yes, I can walk on it. Yes, I can bike on it, but I can't have a wheelchair on it. Because that alone make it an X-51.
Well, and here's the thing, there, there might be a grade issue where for an F-51, what the, what the grade is, it can't, how it'd be more than a s- and maybe Sharon, like, what grade is, because it is a little bit steep. It might be difficult for a person to go, you know, I mean, maybe they could get down it, but they couldn't get back up.
And that would probably make...
You know, just the arm strength, they would need, unless you have a right shoulder.
Fence right, right alongside, it has to be built up, with the fence there.
Right. The fence, I think the fence ends before the bump, but just there, really, it's...
It's gotta be, it goes all the way across.
Uh, okay.
So what are your thoughts on the grade? I mean, you have a little bit of knowledge, it seems like, on that, as far as, have you had somebody with disabilities? That grades seem to be steep to you?
For sidewalks, that's, um, I have to double check on that. For transportation issues, yeah, it's, it's without a line, but, you know, there's a difference in transporting somebody across a barrier that's too elevated. But sidewalks, they got a little bit different character.
That could be, um, money the village could spend to just rev it. You know, it might not be an ADA site after all because of the, the grade, but it would help the bikers. It depends on how far you can, not spread out the angle, but bikers can go on the street.
Bikers have to go on the street, right? I bike on the street, I don't bike on the sidewalk.
Right. But, I don't know, we gotta find out. I like the sidewalk. Anyways, I'm happy we did white car, now watch. Okay.
I wonder if they can help us with the grade issue? Or is that a possibility?
I don't know. Yeah, anytime you start talking about grade, we're talking about an engineering study.
That's, yeah, and you're probably gonna have to look at some of that, but that's, and that's the only spot I can see where, where we really have a problem, you know? On such a short distance.
Right. Is that sidewalk, could it have sunk? I mean, why was there such a discrepancy there? They built their driveway up, probably.
It's probably just the way Lance said.
It could be.
So, um...
Could be.
That, that corner used to be.
We talked about it in the, we did the road here, was that like a tag or something? Yeah, that was a big problem, we tried to cut off some of that, but it wasn't working.
And being that there's stairs at the corner here, it's always clearly been...
It's always been, yeah. Right. Okay, um, uh, one of the other spots that we noticed was over by the church where there was a sidewalk. And a sidewalk, and then there's a small section.
And that would be, is it like 30 feet? What, the southwest quadrant, right at the corner of Whitehead and South Street from here. And then, which is, Whitehead is the north south, you got West Street, and then Whitehead to the east. And South is the southernmost. So there's two red dots.
Uh, yes.
Go around that church, is the corner.
Oh, yeah, the dot right here is completely...
Two large red dots.
As well tiny. Yeah, tiny little piece.
Actually, right, it's a darker red, it's disconnected.
Right. So I think that is a priority, just in terms of, um, because it's a, because it's a church and there's people who park.
It's very flat.
Right, it's an easy, it's an easy, it's an easy. How many feet was it? Should we, I don't know.
Mark it as a 10, something like that?
I think it won't go that much.
No, not.
Maybe it's a little between both sides.
Yeah. Yeah, it wasn't much, and that was a good white sidewalk, I think.
So, okay, and then, uh, anyone else have a spot that they wanted to build?
The other disconnected, if you followed that spot and go to the Pollyant Trail, there was a sidewalk that comes down Rochester.
Yes, that was another one priority for me, is connect Rochester Road to the Pollyant Trail. Can we label?
Yeah, I'll, I'll put these as, I was gonna circle those priorities on the map.
That is a real priority.
But those, again, are givies, like, that's a, that's a flat spot, no trees, no, nothing gray, that's...
Right, right.
Kind of like number one.
Well, we can, we can prioritize them, yeah, number one might be that Pollyant Trail.
Well, just because it's traveled a heck of a lot more than this corner over here, you know, for sure.
Right. Okay. And then, um, anyone else have one? It would just be disconnected.
The opposite side of the Pollyant had the, uh, the opposite side of Rochester at that same corner of the Pollyant, I think it had two ADA.
Is that what the two red dots are?
Yeah, the two painted ones.
I wonder if we couldn't, if we label on all the ADA points, if we couldn't find some sort of funding because of its ADA compliance?
So, if, even if there's only a little bit per year, who's it? I don't think it's knocked these out.
So, make ADA, just because of funding, a priority of all the corners that are missing it?
I think that's worth looking into, I mean, we may be able to come up with funds a lot easier for that.
Yeah, so I can use the other, our other monies to do other things.
Exactly.
Because I think DTW could probably fix these disconnects, those are small enough projects.
So the, the church one could be a DTW?
Yeah.
No, yeah, that's, it's not, that's not a private street, no, no. So I'll, I'll put DTW on that.
Or is this possibility of DTW on those two disconnects?
And which is the other one?
The one...
The Pollyant, yeah. That doesn't have to be ADA, or does it?
It's just a disconnect right now, so I think just connecting cement to cement, you're fine.
'Cause it's not a crosswalk with cars, maybe they don't put it for trails, okay?
There's, it's no motorized, so.
But is that, that part of the trail's composite anyway, is it not?
Right. But it goes in a big clod of grass.
Okay, I guess that's what you're not like, you prefer the transition.
Well, it should go, yeah, it's like sidewalk.
It's a sidewalk and then composite, not sidewalk, grass composite, okay?
And again, if you were a wheelchair, it's gonna be a lot.
Right. Okay, uh, any other spots? I mean, that would be, we're talking phase one maybe, right? Even...
Did we need, uh, Northwest Quadrant at North Street and Forest, there's another, I guess that's another ADA spot.
At, at North Street?
Yeah, I think that one just ended.
Yeah, is there grass there? Is there grass? Yeah, that's, that's a priority, so make that number three.
I mean, it's all related to see a sidewalk, why not?
Okay, what happens... Okay, what happens by Whitehead? Is that where, it just ends at the, um, the hill? At the White House?
Uh, those, yes, it just ends at the driveway.
What's the red dot mean? It's not ADA.
That's, that's what it is.
Correct. Actually, I think those are ADA, because that's all part of Leonard Road getting redone, isn't it? So I think those two, at Whitehead, both sides of Whitehead were okay. The red dot is somebody's driveway.
Okay.
And then that sidewalk ends at the White House's driveway.
Uh-huh.
Yes, you can, there's a slight bump right there, but you can, I think that one could be a little better.
Yeah, what was the bump, I don't remember?
Yes, it's small, but it's more steep than a wheelchair could maneuver.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
DPW might be doing one too.
And, and do we have an address on that?
One fourteen.
Was it, was it, um...
One fourteen.
Like that?
Well, it's, it's more like, it's a short, just a, someone did, when they put, when they, when they ramped it, they ramped it up steep instead of ramping it out, and they used it for federate reroute. Number, number one fourteen.
How do you know that address?
That was for sale.
Oh. Okay, so, um, in terms of larger projects, um... If Forest, okay, if Forest had to be repaved in the next ten years, I don't know what the schedule is for repainting new road, like, repainting roads. How long do they wait? Is it just impossible to try and...
Well, we got, uh, we got money from open account.
Right. That was, that's been...
It was new when I moved in, twenty fourteen, it was new. Yeah, it was new, I think it was new in two thousand six.
It's all new.
Because I couldn't actually find my house, and so we ended up taking a lot of backroads to try to see the house, um, initially.
Was the road always closed?
Because where it was closed.
Correct. But was it closed down there? It wasn't us that, it was...
You know, I can't, you know, honestly, it was a little bit confusing, but I remember that it was being done at that point, that's all I know. What, what portion of it, I feel like it was?
It was south, was it?
Yeah.
Okay. I think the road was new when I moved in two thousand six. I think it was brand new in two thousand six.
That might be...
So it's less than a good fifteen years so far.
And I don't, well, I don't see that gonna be replaced for...
Not a while, right. So I was gonna say, we could just have widened that side piece?
Yeah.
Well, wasn't just the resurfacing portion, wasn't it like a million dollars a mile or something like that? Is that ridiculous?
It was, it was, it was a lot of money that we didn't have to pay.
Oh, I didn't realize we didn't have to.
Well, we did, we bonded.
Yeah, we had a boat, we're still a corporation, but we had a...
Right.
We had a bond.
Right.
Other bonds online.
We also, we bonded, I think, I'm correct.
One billion a mile.
Well, it's supposed to be only one.
Well, that was, there was more than just laying down asphalt.
There's drains.
There was drainage that had to be done, and curving, and, and it was, for this village, it was extensive.
Mm-hmm, yeah, for this village, I mean, my goodness, look at the tax base. A hundred and twenty-five homes or whatever we had here, my goodness. Yeah.
Okay, um, so I guess the next step would be to, like, going forward, propose, let's do this section this year, let's do this section that year, let's do that section that year. We can attack that maybe at our next meeting.
I like the way you said, let's make a proposition or proposal for a phase and have it kind of lined out, especially I think if we start out with something really small, a modest proposal for our initial first phase, just these couple easy ones that we know that we can do. And then I think in the process of that, we're gonna kind of get educated a little bit about maybe, you know, I'd like to learn more about a few more ways that we can finagle some things in the meantime, but at least, like you said, it's the start, it's just getting something going.
Something written down, maybe be really rough and fleshed out, you know, later. And you follow, um, getting, you know, proposed funding, proposed, um, you know, budget. If you get five thousand dollars a year to do little things, and then maybe after three years, you do a big project, who knows? And, yeah.
Or, I mean, at that point, it's a little big project, maybe you end up skipping a year to do with the following one, because now you have ten thousand to work with. And then you finish the project, you know, finish that section, so.
Now, it'd be, it'd be nice to, to get a sidewalk in front of the nature park.
To be, yeah.
Complete something, you know, make, maybe make our goal to complete something. If the school section's completed, and then maybe connect the park to the village, you know?
A sidewalk in front of the nature park?
Yeah, for sure.
So, uh, the next step, I think, is to actually look at a map and figure out the footage.
Okay, so that would be between, uh, some, what, Southwest Quadrant, Southwest map, between Division and Polyon Trail on the east side of Rochester.
Correct, but we'd have to transfer it to the southeast map.
I'm gonna do that, yeah. I'm gonna put X there because that's non-existent and priority proposed.
And so footage is what I need to figure out. And for sure, we need to see if the sidewalk there is five feet or four feet in front of the fire station.
Those are probably all five because they're...
So we should match that to make it five.
Yeah.
So...
I don't believe there, I think there was a couple things that might be in the way, but probably not the most significant.
I think we'll be back tomorrow and take a look at how much of the sidewalk is existing in there.
Yeah, anybody shoot me any kind of, um, text, just text everybody so we can update our maps. So then the other, um, any other priorities? So we got one, two, three, would number four be the park? Or was that, uh, did I miss something?
That might be a bigger ask than we could have for phase one. Are you thinking, is part of the basis though, is part of priorities though?
Uh, make that phase two.
Thinking, just because, I like your idea that we talked about.
So would phase one be all ADA? Want to do all the ADA corners that we marked? Or at least try?
Right. And disconnects?
And the disconnects, one, two, and three.
Yeah.
So then phase two?
So you have the Polyon disconnect as one, the church disconnect as two?
Um, yes, I think so.
What kind of timeframe do you approve, require for a phase?
Obviously, a phase is a year.
Probably a year. I mean, I, I don't know that we could get this done before.
So one to two years on phase one? Because the money may not be available for all one year, but we grab, we just get what we can and then continue on and then have a five-year...
Right, if you, if you're trying to get money from ADA, um, that's gonna take some time. It's not, if we can try to get phase one done next summer, that would be good. We could do, um, you know, we could make recommendations just to do repairs and not even call it a phase. It's just, we want, we, you know, we did a site survey, we need these three, these three areas fixed because there's a bump here, there's a crack or something here. That could just be, the planning commission making a recommendation that could be done this summer by the DPW.
Yeah.
So that would just be maintenance, we could call the first stage maintenance. And then phase one would be all ADA, and then the three disconnects, one, two, and three. Three would be the Polyon Trail, um, what's that? I got three is the North Street.
Yeah.
Two is the...
Church.
Church, and one is the Polyon Trail. So...
I think that'll make a, a, a good difference that maybe we'll have much more enthusiasm.
Uh-huh.
So, unfortunately, they go further than the phase two area.
So phase two would be the park? Oh, I didn't number on the Porter Street thing. That's the, the driveway that's too high, the five, oh, I, I mean, I mean the Porter House, sorry.
Porter House, gotcha.
Yeah.
Or the yellow house?
See, that might be, and if you put that into phase two. Like I said, we'd have to ask...
At least, at least right now, we have the time to investigate it more, and...
Exactly, nothing such as can't pull it forward.
Yeah.
Right.
I'd rather pull it forward than be raped.
I think it's a good idea, the timeline of one to two years, that way we end up ahead of our goal. You know, it kind of, because right now, it's really open-ended for us. We really don't know how long funding takes, or they don't know how long this thing's taking.
Right.
It's just, um, it's a shot in the dark until we become...
Unless we just do this, the, the few DPW things, we can...
For sure.
Do, and although that he's kind of backed up.
And that's, if, as long as he has time to do something.
Right.
As long as we're not holding him to the fire.
Right.
Just came along and we've...
So, what's...
I'll probably get with money can, and, and, because I'm a rhyme, I can probably help them all with that. Soon as we get the ball started.
So what's our next step? Anybody, uh, do you want to just do a phase one and phase two, or do you wanna flesh out all the way through a ten-year plan?
Like I said, we're gonna learn stuff in the process of...
Do we? Phase one and phase two, because I think, I agree with you, as we're doing this, we're learning, and things may change as far as, something may become a priority for one reason or another, you know?
What if they were just listed, like, um, pave such and such and such and such? With, you know, the hopeful goal of, you know...
More of a general?
Yes, very general.
A general, okay.
And, and outline it out all the way to how many years?
I don't know if I'd put years on it right now, but you can give an indication, uh, the, the board, an indication of what we'd like to see completed. I know everyone's like, well, on the timeline, well, you know, who knows, it takes time. We're gonna start with the one to two, maybe end up with, the next phase would be a fiber plan. To grab a couple more items. But the whole initial project is to make all of our sidewalks work, work together, which is what you basically laid out in your, you know, the very beginning.
Because somebody, you know, if we knock out some of the small ones, then we may not have a different way.
Right, you're right, but some of the others are, are actually just really big, yeah.
They're gonna be fire plugs themselves.
Unfortunately, just because of the nature of the landscape here, it's challenging.
This way, we got a chance to dig down and find out, or we can come up with findings, what, what...
What it takes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because hopefully you can get some businesses that do this work, maybe, uh, will donate some.
Right. Okay, so what do we do in terms of tonight?
Update the map.
Update the map.
Give it back to everybody.
Okay.
And we'll transfer anything that's, uh, on two pages will be transferred to the other side. No matter what you're looking at, you'll see both sides, Rochester, both sides of Forest notes. I'll add the priorities, um, I'll circle them, just try, you know, it's very simple and very clean. That way, if we change things, it's just...
Okay.
Fix them, and then...
And then just then research, talk, I'll talk to Mike and see what I can find out about some of the questions we had.
Yeah.
That I wrote down. Okay.
I'll get some measurements on some of the areas.
Okay.
I'll go to research now.
And the, uh, the park area.
Okay. And should we just talk about it at the next meeting? Or, um, should we try to write something up so they can get presented to the, the council before then? Oh, we are, our operating timeline. One more meeting before we present it to the council? Yeah, probably.
I have some on the page one here. They've been presented, um, what our project is. To what extent.
Put a little, um, a little Oakland County Complete Streets verbiage in here?
Yeah.
To be more compliant with what our county is.
Right.
Okay.
We've seen improvements, we would like to continue that improvements through all the rest of the village itself. And then we'll lay out further plans.
Okay.
As we dig further into the technical stuff.
So in terms of priorities of our master plan goals, I'm gonna go to the last page where we got our goals, which is, um... Sidewalks in here. Little square, little signs, parking, down, streets gate. Sidewalk, complete, it's project number nine, complete sidewalk system, master plan, priority high. Availability of the product, significance of impact high, general community moderate. I'm doing programs to construct and repair sidewalks and to complete connections to activity centers. Solicit public opinion and coordinate with other future capital improvements, item circulation, drainage improvements. So, um, we're number nine on the list.
Probably benefits the most, benefits the most people.
Right.
Probably waste a lot of money.
Okay. All right, so moving on the agenda, I gotta find my agenda.
I'm pretty sure my...
That'd be good. So, oh, the village council, uh, update. The village was painted, everybody's seen it, they love it. Um, getting good comments on how it looks better, and he did paint the rest of his building ring.
There's a, yeah, a little bit more paint left. But I'll let him go for a little bit. He got the two colors, so it's, he's cleaned up a little bit, he's painted one color. The, the same blacky, who's white building.
Right.
Got painted, he showed interest in continuing to make it better. And that's, that's all we asked for.
That's very good. Any other village council updates?
I missed the last one.
I was there, but one of the, uh, we had the strawberry festival.
Yes.
Block party, excuse me, block party, not strawberry festival.
Same to go off, if it's going, and it sounded like everybody's had great success. I thought it went really well. Considering it was a post-COVID, nobody knew what was going on. I think next year is the anniversary, right? It's an anniversary.
It'd be seventieth, technically, it'd be the seventieth. This year would've been our sixty-ninth strawberry festival, but it really wasn't a strawberry festival, it was a block party. So I'm not quite sure how they wanna...
Hopefully they'll count the number then, I don't know.
Right, hopefully they'll count it, because I know it sounds like they want to double down on it next year and make it nicer and better.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
So hopefully, we're looking at it as having a year of...
Cool plans.
Yeah.
Okay, um, any, um, planning commissioners have any topics, questions, and concerns to bring up? Here are none, I make a motion to adjourn.
On the second thing.